June 24, 2014, committee the whole meeting. Number two, approval of agenda. Does anybody care to approve the agenda or have any additions for the agenda?
Moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
No.
Contrary? Carry. Anybody have any conflict of interest declarations? I think there might be one, Alain, that we spoke about earlier.
Yes, possibly. I don't think there is a conflict there, but we could, well, hm, there is potentially one on five A.
Yeah.
Commercial tax exemption request. And I will, I'll advise the person electronically around that.
Okay.
Because we kept the particular
That's right.
...organization private.
Yeah.
But, you know, so, so the person wouldn't know he was in conflict.
That's right.
Or potentially not.
That's right.
So that might be, sorry, that might be declared when we get to that item.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, no others?
It is a mystery.
Yeah. So, okay, hearing no other conflict of interest, we'll go to number three, presentations. Nova Scotia Music Week. Mr. Rick Allright, you have the floor. Your mic is on, as far as I know?
Thank you very much, councillors. So, we are bidding on Nova Scotia Music Week once again for the years of 2015, 16, and 17. The bid has been submitted to Nova Scotia Music, as it was due a couple weeks ago. So, Nova Scotia Music is the rights holder for this event, and we have hosted this event in the past for three years in total. It's an annual celebration of music with celebrating, with musicians, music fans, high-profile music industry professionals, and media. It's a professional development conference plus a music showcasing event. And as I said, we, we did submit it for the years of 2015, 2016, and 2017. We don't know what we're gonna get. I'm pretty confident we're gonna get one, hopefully. And we'll see what happens from there. Some of the event components, there's showcasing festival, which is one of the major parts where all the musicians that are invited to come play in different venues that are selected to, to host the event. Opening reception, songwriter's circle, the conference part component of it, late-night music suite, awards brunch, there's an arena show, the super show, it's a little bit different than in the past. In the past, it was a, that was part of the awards component. This, starting this year in Truro, they are now doing a, they're bringing in a headline, big headlining act, either a national or international musician, supported by Nova Scotia Musicians. So it'll draw a bigger ticket, more, more ticket sales. And then there's the closing reception. For this event, as you know, in the past, there is an investment involved. The investment for the next years are higher than in the past. So licensing fee is $20,000. In the past, it was $10,000. And the in-kind component, which has not changed at this point, is $20,000. At this point, so that we could get the bid in, the town of Yarmouth did guarantee the full amount, and at this point, we're looking for the Yarmouth values coming as partners to cost share in that total amount. The partnership proposal that we're, we're putting forward is one-third of the $20,000 licensing fee, which equals out to $6,666. And that would be shared between the municipality of Yarmouth, yourselves, and the town of Yarmouth. The in-kind component, hotel rooms have been committed to this event already by the hotels, the full amount that Nova Scotia Music has asked for. And then we would break down the rest of the in-kind evenly between the three municipalities. And we would be recommending that 2,000 of that in-kind component from each municipality be going towards the Mariner Center to pay that, to pay that bill. Just some economic impact numbers. In 2010, when we did host the event, there was an economic impact assessment completed on the event by Events Nova Scotia and the Canadian Sport Tourism Commission. And these are some of the numbers that they came back with. Initial expenditure of close to $540,000. So that number includes initial visitor spending, hotel, on hotel rooms and whatnot, and the total amount needed to execute the event in the first place. Wages and salaries, total $469,000. So that's the amount of wages represented that come down from that, that initial expenditure. So that represents 18.6 equivalent full-time jobs. It's not new jobs, that's extra shifts and whatnot. There may be a new job in there, we don't know. It's just, but it's included as extra shifts and whatnot like that. GDP estimate, 666,000, with a total industry output of $1.3 million. So additional benefits that we would see is 1,000-plus room nights sold in our region, community pride, community value, and another great addition to our hosting resume. We have asked that Nova Scotia Music consider hosting their acading component again, doing our acading component, and that be hosted at Purimba Theater, as it has been in the past. And they're, they're more than willing to do, to look at that again. They're very excited about doing it. So our commitment, or our ask from you is the $6,666 in licensing fee, and then a commitment towards in-kind of the $4,466 for a total investment of $11,132.
Per year?
That's per year, yeah. If we get more than one year.
No.
That's basically all I have, and keep it short and sweet. You guys know the event already, we have been through it, and we know exactly what it does for our community. And I'm more than willing to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay, questions from the floor. I see councillor Dolison.
Yes, you applied for three years, hoping to get all three or hoping to get one of them?
We applied for all three, in the hope that we get all three, but with the understanding that they were specifically looking for 2015 from us. But we didn't want to limit our options by only applying for one particular year.
Okay. And another question. We've been, we've been working on a different formula than you have here for, for cost sharing for different
Okay.
...events, projects, whatever, however you want to put it, based on who, which municipality hosts, municipality of Yarmouth, we definitely get the lion's share of the benefits from something like this. So I'm not comfortable with, with the third, third, or third, so I'm, I'm totally in favor of supporting this and giving some kind of funding, but I'm not in support of a third to a third. That's just my personal opinion.
Absolutely, and it's a definitely a valid opinion that has to be taken into consideration, for sure.
That's it for me.
Anybody else? Okay, councillor Sorette.
You've approached, at least I've seen that on the, on the newspaper, you have approached Yarmouth, and I have a couple of questions. Question one is, they've agreed to, to sponsor, to sponsor this?
So the town of Yarmouth has committed the full amount at this point. We have presented to the municipality of Yarmouth, and they have not voted on it as of yet, but during that presentation, they were all in favor of doing the full third percent, third event, so.
Right on. Right on. I think it's a great thing that you're doing, that you're applying again for this. It seemed to be quite successful, and I think including Parabah into it has certainly, in my opinion, certainly swayed my opinion a little heavier onto this, and I would certainly be voting for this. It's certainly a good project. A lot of the residents, I've heard a lot at my business, where some of the two or three of the, the young kids that play music or singing and that, they get involved in it, and they name me a lot of people from Parabah, they go to Yarmouth and do, do, to participate, if I can say it.
Absolutely.
And from Drummond, and that's all. I'd truly be supporting this.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Just so I'm, I'm clear on the in-kind, what exactly is the in-kind? Because you said the hotels were giving rooms in-kind, and then we're paying money in-kind, so.
They classified as in-kind. They classified as in-kind. In the past, it's always, there's always been a cash outlay from the municipalities. It's, it's more, it's, they're trying to direct it as to something like the Mariner Center. So they would consider it a soft cost to municipalities because they're owners of the, of that venue. So that's what they're going at. The, and we can also go to other businesses to try and get in-kind as well. Like if we went to CAT and asked them to sponsor part of the generator to go down to Dulley's, that could be part of the in-kind. So we're asking for total amounts from the municipalities of what's expected. That, and final amount might actually be lower, based on what we can get in sponsorship and whatnot.
Okay. Any other questions? Don't see any more lights on. As far as decision, I mean, we're not gonna make a decision right now, but having, the fact that we're not having any other council meetings, CA Muse, your suggestion would be?
I guess I'd, I'd have a question around when the fund, like, so if it's for 2015, when would the funds be required?
There's no immediate need to make a decision. I'm gonna put that out there. The town of Yarmouth has committed it, so we can have that bid in. They're not gonna make a decision, or at least announce a decision, until November 9th.
Okay.
So we won't know anything until then.
All right.
As far as disbursement of money, if we were to get the 2015 event, we'd need the money in 2015.
Okay, so there'd be no rush on the decision. So then, the only other question I'd have from a logistical point of view is, is, is it the town of Yarmouth, so if the town of Yarmouth has committed the full funds, are we in fact, are we in fact contributing to the town of Yarmouth to offset their costs? Or are we contributing to YASTA towards the project?
You being a contributor, that's a good question. We would have to work that one out with the town of Yarmouth. We will discuss that between all the CAOs.
That's a, that's a very, very well-informed and educated answer.
Yeah. Let's, let's leave that up to you guys, and we'll figure that out later.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That was an unfair question, my apologies.
Councillor Muse?
No, my, my question was asked. I was gonna ask, the timing and whatever.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Allright? Allright, I guess you can leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll move on to, I guess you're still, you're still filming, Scott? Yeah, we'll move on then to number four, business arising from the minutes. We don't have any minutes, so we'll continue on to number five, other business and for Five A, commercial tax exemption requests. I think that's one for you, CA Muse.
Yeah, so there, I've, I've advised there might be a conflict in this one. What we're trying to do with this one, the reason why it's a dirty little secret is, is, is that we don't want the, the particular organization to be identified. I want to protect privacy. However, I've, I've informed one of our councillors that there, there might be, there might be a connection with, with, so there may be a conflict. And so in the, in the absence of knowing for sure, it's entirely up to the Councillor to make the call, but.
No, no, we're sure.
Okay. So, I'm good. We'll, we'll do that. So.
All right, you have the floor.
So this, there's, there's attachments to your agenda, to your agenda. And so I'll explain the situation. It's unusual. So as you know, every year, we talk about in our budgetary process around tax exemptions for nonprofit organizations. So the nonprofit organizations each year, and, and the organizations that are involved are engaged in this, in this exemption include community halls, they include like Musée Acadienne, Village Historique.
Churches.
A lot of churches are, are not listed here, they're, they're exempt. Oh, no, I apologize. Church property that isn't churches is also listed here. I think the churches are exempt under another, another law. So, so a lot of community halls particularly are included in this exemption. So each year, we look at the list, and we look and say, okay, has anything changed? Typically, nothing changes. So in this instance, what has happened, what I've, what I've included with your package is a chronology of events. Because our policy, while it's, it works, or, sorry, it's a bylaw. Our bylaw works in terms of like allowing us to exempt these properties. It is silent on when a property ceases to be exempted. Okay? So what we have done in this particular instance with this business is that we have eliminated this property from the exemption list, and this organization, a commercial enterprise, has been taxed for the assessed value of this particular building. Okay? I'm gonna back up a little bit. On December 1st, in December of every year, we get our assessment roll. Okay? And on that roll is, is basically, is, is what is the basis upon which that we, that we tax our residents and our commercial businesses. It's on that assessment. And so in a lot of case, so, so what happens is if you're in construction, or if there's something going on that's, that's not completed, December is a key time for that to be assessed. So you can construct a building, for example, starting in January, and you won't see any of that tax until, until they see that particular assessment in December of the fall, of the year. Okay? So that's, that's important information, right? Because that's the basis upon which, that all of our residents actually receive a notice for appealing their taxes. So in this particular instance, at December 1st, the nonprofit organization owned this building. And they received, in January, the information we all receive as residents, the assessment. And of course, on that assessment report is your opportunity to appeal. Okay? So in mid to late January, that, that was sent to the previous owner, being the nonprofit organization. On January 15th, the offer, the offer was made on the property, and, from a commercial organization. And in mid to late February, on, on February 17th, that sale closed. And in or around, if it wasn't exactly on the same day, it was awfully close to the assessment appeal being due. So on the 27th of February, the municipality of Argyle received a change of address, and the new owner was listed. So when we do our planning for budgeting, at that time, we would produce a list of exempted properties. And of course, we have that by property identification number, and so.
Different one for Chris.
Yeah, sorry. So, so we do that by property identification number, and so if the property ownership has changed, at that point, staff says, okay, well, this is no longer a nonprofit organization that owns this property. Therefore, should not be included in the exemption. Okay? So that's what happened. So in this particular instance, this, this, this building went from exempt to taxable. That is an internal decision. That's not a decision of assessment. That is the decision of the municipality, because it's based on a bylaw that we manage. Okay? So the purchase price of the property was quite a bit less than the assessed value. The, the issue that has been raised by the now-owner is that this corporation did not have the opportunity to appeal the value of his taxes. So our first approach, I know this is a long story, but it deserves the, the amount of time. The person did not appeal the taxes because, A, they never received the appeal information, the previous owner did. So somewhere along the line, that information wasn't transmitted to the new owner. There was a real estate agent and lawyers involved. For some reason, that information was not transmitted to the new owner. So the new owner did not make an appeal. We, their first stop was PVSC, the assessment office, and say, look, here's our situation. And while they looked at the situation and said, wow, that's an interesting, you know, turn of events, they couldn't by law make a change for the current year. Okay? And so it leaves us with an interpretation issue of our bylaw. And so I've, I've contacted our solicitor, and what our solic, I had, I had presented three options, and he actually said one of them was probably not appropriate, so we now have two options to consider. So, so the issue again is that the bylaw 28 does not provide us any interpretation of when the exemption should be removed. Okay? So the other, the other piece that the staff did in terms of work to support, you know, what the situation should be, is we went to other bylaws across the province to see what other people are doing. And of the three that responded, that sent the bylaws, all three treated it the same way that we treated it, which is to say that on the date of the transaction, that's when the exemption ceases. However, it was explicitly stated in the bylaw that that's what would happen. Right? We don't have that stated. So here, again, we have an interpretation issue that I think requires councils' interpretation or, or I guess motion, or interrogation, or solution from you. So the two options that I can see, that I would present to you for discussion, is that we do nothing. That we, that how staff has interpreted this transaction is correct, and, and that the taxpayer will pay the bill. Okay? So what is, so, so that's one option. And I'll explain, I'll explain in a little bit more detail what that means for the taxpayer and for us in each instance. The second option is, is to use, and I think, I think we can do this, I think this is a fair interpretation. Again, in absence of having it written, we have to make an interpretation call. So the other interpretation would be, as of December 1st, that the property was still possessed or owned by the, the nonprofit organization. Therefore, they are the ones that received all the information around the appeals, and therefore, they were the only ones that could actually change their tax condition at that time. Therefore, option two suggests that council could consider that as, because it was still owned by the nonprofit organization at December 1st, that it would be treated as non-taxable for this fiscal year. So one of them, one option, option one means that this particular organization would be taxed, and they would be taxed for an assessed value of $192,000, which is about $4,200 of taxes, property taxes. Keeping in mind that I think it's a fair statement to say that if that was appealed, that then the number would be, would be lower.
No question.
Right? So, so I think, I, I don't, I don't know what the number would be, but I would be 100% sure that it would not be $192,000. Okay? So, so, so that's what would happen if we choose option one. So of course, that would mean that we would receive our taxes on an overstated valued property. Okay? The second option would be that we would receive virtually zero dollars for this property. I say virtually because there is an area rate that has to be paid regardless. And what it would say is, is, okay, well, it's because we're using the December 1st rule, that in fact, it was still exempt at that time, so that's how we're gonna treat you for the next, for the next fiscal. That means we don't get any tax, but they get the benefit of the whole, the entire rebate. Okay? So that's what would happen under those two options. This is a difficult one. But I will say that, you know, I just, I wanna point out the fact that, that this was a, this was, was a surplus property, a surplus community hall, or a community building, that was purchased by a commercial enterprise. So, so I think if you, if, whatever your decision, I think, I would strongly suggest that that interpretation be changing the bylaw appropriately, so that in the future, that that's what we would do. So your decision, in a lot of ways, regardless of what you decide, will set a precedent for any other such transaction. Not that we have a bunch of these selling every year, but it will set a precedent, one way or another, that we will apply moving forward.
One good thing about this is, it's, it's.
Councillor Muse?
What would have happened if, okay, this, this happened after the appeal process. Person had no, no recourse in, in that assessment. However, what would have happened if this property had been sold in, in June? Nobody would have paid taxes, and he would have had six months without paying taxes as well. What's the difference here? If it happened after the fact, I, I would almost think that we can't really, they, they bought, they bought a building that was exempt at the time that they bought it, right? Normally, if you buy it, if you buy a, a property after the taxes are paid, and there's still time in the year, then you, you, I as a buyer would have to pay the taxes to that owner for the rest of the year, right? For, for the portion, it's free, not to the municipality, but to the owner.
That's correct.
If I, if I sell my house now, and I paid my taxes, whoever buys it pays me for the, on a prorated portion, right?
That is absolutely correct.
So, so the, the, the prorated portion on this is nothing. So it's pretty hard to tax that person due to the fact that, that it came in after he had no, he, he, he really had, had no recourse.
This, this is the issue that staff has been wrestling with, and it's the reason why we brought it to council. I think if this was a slam dunk, we would have made a decision and moved on. The problem in this particular instance is he had no, he had, the, the company, I shouldn't say he or she.
No.
The company had no recourse.
No, neither do.
Like, we have, we have a process, whether it's imperfect or perfect, and we, we all know it's imperfect, but the process is there. But he had no ability, the company had no ability to, to, to protect his company or her company from that. Right? That's the issue.
Exactly. Because when I read the bylaw, I interpret it that way, that, that he, you know, the previous owner would, would not have any motivation to appeal as they were exempt, and the current owner did not receive the appropriate documentation in time. So to me, that's the way I read it, and that's the way I, I would interpret that. We can't do much. Pretty hard to, to bill this person for that, that assessment. That's, that's a high assessment for, for that type of building. You know what I mean? Like, why is it not, if it was worth that to, to, to them, why is it not worth, you're saying probably it's gonna get reduced? And probably you're right. But if they were just assessing the building, the building is, is the same now that it, that it was when, when it was owned by the previous owners.
Yeah.
Will it go down? We don't know that. But at this point, I don't think we, my view is, we can't, we can't charge him for the tax for this year.
Okay?
Yes.
Councillor Allright?
I was just, when I first read this, I really didn't understand it. I'm gonna be honest, but I was like, I don't know what language this is. But you explained it really well. So this is, it was a nonprofit, so they're exempt, and it's a commercial that bought it. So they will continue to pay taxes here on it, like, next year, and that's my understanding?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. So after this year, we will expect to get tax revenue from them?
Yes, and, and just, just on that point, we will expect to get tax revenue on an assessed value that is reasonable.
Okay, so it won't necessarily be this?
It won't be.
Or if it is, they will have the ability to deal that?
They will have, they will have the ability, and they will be successful in reducing that number. What that number will be, I don't know.
Okay, that's kinda just what I wanted to, to clarify, that it was commercial, and that we'll still be getting revenue from them.
Absolutely.
Even if, like, they're exempted. Let's say we decide that they're exempt for this year, here on in, we're still gonna be getting revenue, tax revenue from them.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Uh Warden Don'ton.
Yes, uh I guess back to my point, you know, this is, this is one of those good things. We have a a. Property that we haven't been collecting taxes on and and some commercial outfit buys it and they'll be paying taxes on it.
Commercial rate.
Uh we're commercial. This is, you know what we dream of? That usually doesn't happen. So I think it's a good thing, so whatever council decides, I guess.
Counselor Donaldson.
Yeah, it sounds like a little bit of unprofessionalism by the. The real estate agent, they should have pointed this out that when you go from nonprofit to commercial, there could probably be some. Tax implications there, no matter what date it's done on. And that wasn't done. To me, and the buyer certainly know would know this going from com- into commercial that they're gonna be taxed. Uh there's a big discrepancy in in assessment in purchase value. Is there any way you can charge taxes on the purchase price and prorate it for the number of months that he's owned it? Uh calculate it, a figure, because. I don't like the I I don't like setting example of. Somebody running commercially for biggest part of the year of paying no taxes, that's putting him out of competitive edge over his competitors that. Are in the same business, if you will, it may, it may not, but it can be perceived as that way. So I mean, this owner realizes that he should have to pay some kind of tax on a commercial operation, I would think. Even if the real estate agent didn't point that into him.
Um the 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 first question you asked was whether or not we could prorate or use the purchase price and the answer is no. Um so we have limited ability to deal with that in the law. Uh PVSC would have been the obvious solution, cause then they could, if they could have, they could have reevaluated the property appropriately and then he would. He the company would have paid taxes on that revised value. Unfortunately, we can't do that either. Um I think the buyer certainly certainly knew that there would be property taxes and the buyer has stated that he did. Uh go visit PVSC to obtain information. And there may have been a discrepancy or or a misunderstanding that occurred there. I I don't know, I can't say for certain. But I know that there was some due diligence on the part of the buyer. In order to understand the company's tax, property tax situation. Um yeah, so and in and in relation to your 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 precedent setting, right? Um that's you're absolutely uh correct. Whatever you decide here, uh if if there is a commercial uh business. That buys another uh com- uh 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 community hall, let's say for lack of a better term. Um they would up, the rule would apply to them as well, and so the question you should ask yourself is whether or not you like that precedent or not. Um you know, you may like it and you may not, uh but there's no question a precedent will be set.
Counselor Soret.
I guess to to the CEO, if he knows the answer, if a person builds a house. And it is done by December the first. Somebody's building a new house or a commercial property. Does he or she pay taxes till the end of March of two thousand of that year?
Do they do they pay taxes?
So let's say in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
Somebody started a building in June. And they are done December the first.
Yes.
Do they pay taxes till the end of March when the building is finished or during, is there any taxes applied to that building?
There the taxes would apply on the fiscal year beginning April first two thousand and fifteen. Based on the assessment at the time of December twenty fourteen. So let's say it's a three hundred thousand dollar home they're building. And they're two thirds done. So two hundred grand is on the assessment roll. That will be what they, if that's the assessment.
Yeah.
That and that's again a determination of PVSC, they will be taxable April first. Not not January first, April first of the twenty fifteen fiscal year.
You've an you've answered, I guess the rest I have now almost, yeah, that tells me what I wanted to know.
All right, so we've heard uh some good discussion around the table, I guess. Couple of things to consider, uh the options, consider that the invoice is accurate and that the taxpayer should be billed as such. And it's number two, as is December first two thousand thirteen, the property was exempt under the bylaw number twenty eight, which we discussed. Thus, he would not be taxable for the next twelve months. Anything to add to that, uh CEO Muse?
I don't think so, uh.
Did we get a recommendation from a lawyer?
The lawyer stated that both options would would uh. Would be acceptable. Because again, it's about interpretation, right? Um I think option one, as I stated, it it was, which is status quo, don't do anything. Um is what is what others have have done. Um other other municipalities have done. I haven't seen all of the bylaws, so I can't say that all of the municipalities have done that. Uh option two is a little bit more um. I guess it's taken into account our current situation. Right? And understanding, understanding that that can happen. So um I think that's where option two is coming from. There's a little, there's there's. Uh the the lawyer would say it's not as clear, there's nothing that tells you you could absolutely do that, but it's a question of interpretation, yeah.
Uh Counselor Soret.
I'd like to make a motion that option one considered that the invoice is accurate and that the taxpayer, uh hold on. Sorry, option two, as as at December first two thousand, the property was exempt under the bylaw, thus he would not be taxable for the next twelve months. That's, so he doesn't pay, what I'm trying to say, he doesn't pay in taxes. Yeah, thank you, just to make sure I'm on the right page. That's I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so move. Anybody else?
I know, agree with uh with Danny's uh reasoning, you know, uh. I I know it's. It it's not an easy decision, but. I I don't think it's a company with with millions and assets and all this stuff either, so. Think we'd, you know, but maybe we shouldn't even consider that. I agree with Danny's comment.
I I I can say that it's a, well, I can say it's a small business. I'll say that it's a local small business. Yeah.
I think probably the only two that are privy would be our CEO and and the chair at this time.
I think. Could be the case. Yeah, to try to, you know, to have the chair try to understand and.
Okay, so um we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Saying aye, saying aye? Contrary? Carry, okay, so that was option number two.
So based on that motion, thank you, uh by the way, for that direction, like we needed it, um we will make the correction. And we will also be amending the bylaw.
Okay, we'll move to uh five B, uh memorandum of understanding. MOU, community renewable energy projects. So this is the uh the M MOU that we have between the town, the municipality of Yarmouth and the municipality of Aragao. Think that CEO Muse, you can enlighten us on the rest. We've already, I think, looked at this.
Yes, uh we've looked at it as a CEO group. Um again, it's not a legally binding document, it's an understanding that we we will be, it's basically an agreement to agree. Um so uh we've looked at it, the solicitors looked at it, other than minor grammatical suggestions. Um he recommended uh signature, if this is your interest, this is obviously the Comfit project. Comfit project that we're all, uh we we've all, we all, I I guess council made a a motion to support, so I would recommend a motion to sign.
Okay, anybody care to move that? Move by Counselor Muse, seconded by Counselor Book. All those in favor? Contrary? Carried. Move on to five C, building Canada Fund priorities. Think we just spoke about those and uh haven't completed our list.
So we had the the special council meeting prior to and we talked about three projects that um qualify. Uh under BCF funding and the three projects that we identified were the um. Ferry terminal, uh new ferry terminal project, the Wedgeport wastewater. Uh construction new project and the Comfit project. So in our discussions, uh I had suggested that the Comfit project had another source of revenue, so. That one, that one uh would be secured in a different fashion. Um the province requires us to identify our top priorities for BCF. Um that basically leaves the other two in my in my view. Um and so it it's it, what what we're asking council to consider is is whether you want to include the two on the list. And uh and in what order.
All right, uh Counselor Soret.
That was prior.
So the only other thing, sorry, the only other thing that I will mention is that when we prioritize the capital projects without looking at BCF. Um the project of the Wedgeport wastewater uh was ranked higher. In terms of priority, based on your discussions.
Yeah.
So. What the province requires is is a resolution on those two or or all those projects. What we're what the work we did prior is actually broader, is a broader uh in uh priority setting.
Yeah. So uh in our in our discussion earlier, so the West Wedgeport wastewater was was. Higher on the list while uh the ferry terminal was uh lower than the 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 Wedgeport water, uh wastewater. Uh. Yeah, project, so set the order that we wanna put it on for the send to the province. Anybody care? Yeah, we need a motion. Move by Counselor LeBlanc. Seconded by Counselor Soret. Any more discussion? You got your light on again, but I'll, okay? Uh all those in favor? Contrary? All right, five D, capital budget approval. So we were. The capital budget and again, that's one for you, CEO Muse.
So this uh. Uh was a late addition because I I wanted to to uh to to have the priority discussion and I wasn't sure whether. How I did this would be consistent with the priority discussion, but I'll take a a couple of minutes to explain the. Um the 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 document that is in front of you. Um so really what we're looking at is the is the uh pink or I guess what color is that, like an orange or? Really lousy on colors, but anyway, so that's. It's colored, yes, and so so that is the budget for the current year. So what we're saying is, uh first of all, it is it's a balanced, it's a balanced budget, the revenues and expenditures uh match. Um I will go to, so what I'll do is I'll focus on page two, which is the expenses, which is what you're. Uh probably more accustomed to seeing. So there's one point one seven six million in this capital budget. Um four hundred, there's there's two very large projects. One is the completion of the Dennis Point extension. Which we believe will be about a a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment uh to finish the project. Um if, as you recall, fifty percent of that is funded by COA, twenty five percent by us, twenty uh using gas tax and twenty five percent by the community users. So so the revenues are recorded in that percentage on page one, okay? So the Comfit uh is the other large project and so this budget assumes that the entire project will be completed in the next twelve months. That's probably aggressive, but uh what I estimate that to be is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And of course, I have a gas tax of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars included in the revenues. And so that's consistent with your number one selection on capital, so I'm pleased. Um so so uh so then the other projects are much, uh well, there's one other larger project. One is the tennis court retrofit. Uh we have talked about this one a number of times. We actually had a motion of a hundred thousand dollars going. Going over uh from the capital, um probably, sorry, hundred and thirty thousand from the capital reserve. From the operating funds of the capital, so I just I included a number that was a little higher to make sure that I had enough in the expenses. And I also have an associated revenue that I can't really announce, but you can see it on page one, from the province of Nova Scotia. I can't talk about it, but it's a nice number. So uh that was that was a that was a yes, kind of like a bonus. So um so that's included in the revenues. Uh the other projects include uh uh the, there's some some software costs that we're going to be investing in in both recreation and public works. Um that that number is high, it won't reach twenty five thousand, but there will be a fifteen thousand and probably a six thousand. Um and they're both to improve. Both either reporting or access to uh fr- from our residents, so and like for example, the recreation will allow for some online. Uh transactions will allow for more uh online access by our residents, so they don't have to come in and pay for stuff. You know, when people are busy and they like to do things online, this is gonna allow that to happen. It's also going to replace replace another database that we had, that we were paying a maintenance fee on, so then that will be eliminated, so there's actually a cost offset. Uh that over time will will uh will um probably amount to the to the amount we pay. Uh the other projects include the medical office expansion that you had, uh you had approved by motion, so it's included uh here in the budget. And the others uh are small, other than one, I have the administration building, this is really a guess. So if we needed to do some preliminary work this year, I wanted to make sure that there was a number in there. And so I also wanted my excess income over expenses to be zero, so I put an amount of sixty seven thousand two hundred. I don't, I I'm pretty certain we're not gonna spend that much money in the next twelve months. Um and and the type of things that we might spend money on are, uh you know, whether we wanna do a a, you know, a a major retrofit. Let's say there's a decision to do uh some access improvements to this particular building. That's a provision that we've put in the budget in case that that's where our decision making brings us, okay? So it's it's all, it's like a, just in case, I don't wanna be caught without a budget number in that area. Um so that that's the one point one seven six, the other numbers are fairly small. And um on page one, it shows how much gas tax we'll be using to offset some of those projects. So we're estimating that five hundred and seventy thousand five hundred will be used for gas tax. To offset three projects in particular, and they're broken down. And the other revenues that we that we would receive, uh one is a is an annual transfer we receive from the operating fund, we budgeted one hundred and twenty thousand this year. That's probably gonna happen again this year. And um and uh the other revenue, of course, there's 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 cash in the bank, so there's interest revenues as well that are included in the. In the revenues for the capital reserve. And I believe that just about. Does it.
Any more questions or questions for CEO Muse? No, okay, I think you want a motion to approve?
Um yes, uh it can be done today or at a future date. I recognize that. You haven't had a lot of time to to look at this, but uh at the same time, I think the projects you'll find that are here are familiar.
Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move the acceptance.
Okay. Okay, move by Counselor Muse, seconded by Counselor Soret. Any more discussion? Question, all those in favor? Contrary? Carried, right? Next one is the operating reserve budget approval and. That one's yours again, CEO Muse.
Very simple. Um really what comes in, uh interest revenue every year. And uh and uh we have anticipated that because we trans- we had uh. Pardon me, we transferred uh uh an amount of money uh into operations last year. We anticipated actually using operational funds, uh we didn't in fact use the reserve for 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 our projects last year. But we will be using it for some of the projects this year. What what we're budgeting is that a two hundred and twelve amount will be uh will be um. Coming from the reserves to offset some of our one-time projects that we're doing this year in the operating fund. So forty thousand in as interest revenue, two twelve out. Uh so there is uh and there there'll be a a negative, it will be, so we're showing a one hundred and seventy two negative. We have every year anticipated a negative um in terms of using the reserves, because as you know, uh conservative budgeter. Um so in the past couple of years, uh we have in fact not. Um, so in the past couple of years, uh, we have in fact not, uh, we've in fact increased the reserve, not decreased. So I think this year it won't be the case. I think we'll probably be decreasing this year, but, uh, but that's the budget that's very, very straightforward.
Anybody, uh, have any comments or care to make a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept. Reserve budget.
Seven.
Okay, moved by councillor Book, seconded by councillor LeBlanc. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Move on to number six, correspondence and for information, Waste Check Enforcement Officer Report. You can, I'm sure you guys read that, so it's for information. Any questions on that one or? Uh, six B, the provincial response to the two thousand thirteen U S M resolutions. Put an attachment to two pages. So these are the status of the two thousand thirteen resolutions. We have them all in order and their status. Nobody has any questions or any comments? Move on to six C, Department of Municipal Affairs, the new building Canada Fund. I think this one's a little bit more interesting. So this is the, uh, details on the maximum of three eligible projects that your Mr. Valley plans to undertake next two to four years. You've already talked about this, anything else to add? C A Muse?
No, just, just that I, I could have easily included that letter
Yeah.
on the priorities decision that you made.
Yeah. Okay. Nobody else with any comments or questions? And then six D, uh, Weston County Regional Library Minutes of March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. They've been circulated with, uh, with those, uh, those minutes. No questions or comments, we'll move on. Number seven, financial requests, grant requests, uh, seven A one, Societe Touristique Montant d'Argyle. You have for attachment of fourteen pages. And this is the, the starlight, uh, starlight designation that, uh, Montant has brought forward. We've had, uh, presentations from, uh, the president, Von Perret. And, uh, anyway, we'll open it to, uh, to the floor, or I don't know if you have anything to add, Alain?
Uh, only that, uh,
The numbers, probably you.
The, yeah, some of the numbers, uh, so there was a question last time we had a discussion around this was, uh, how many of the revenues that they listed were confirmed? Um, I think that the municipality of Clare is making a decision on that like today, tomorrow, soon. I think they're all kinda looking at municipality of Argyle and saying, how much did Argyle, uh, commit? Or whether they will commit. Um, and then the municipality of Yarmouth apparently is also considering that that wasn't listed as a funder. And so they, they are being asked to, to do the three thousand dollars as well evidently. And, and that's, I haven't, I've only heard that from, from Bon-Ton. I haven't heard that from the municipality of Yarmouth at this time. So, so, and of course, the ACOA funding was not approved because, you know, um, the funding, uh, for ACOA is dependent on whether Argyle is going to be engaged in the project. Uh, and the provincial money of a hundred, uh, was confirmed and received. So, uh, half of the project has been confirmed, received.
I spoke to the mayor and the warden today. They, uh, they brought this up and, uh, I think they're, they seem to be in favor. I don't know what the council would decide. They were, uh, very excited about this, I think. Something good for, for the whole area.
Of course, the, the, yeah, the, the ACOA piece that, uh, uh, the, the reason why ACOA is, uh, I guess, uh, Montant Society, uh, tourist, society being a new organization, uh, for ACOA to, I guess, grant monies to a new organization, that's where they, they, they're a little bit uncomfortable. But, uh, with, if, if, I guess if the municipality took the project on, uh, I guess, I, I said that wrong. I don't think we'd be taking the project on, but we would be administering the project. How would that work?
How, how it would work, and, and I have sent this to you, uh, via email, is basically ACOA has, has, has stated that unless the municipality is a co-applicant, that they will not be accepting an application. So, so what that means is that we would administer the project. Um, the control would still be retained by the Bon-Ton, uh, organization. They would approve invoices as they became payable. But that the administration would be at the municipal level. And that gave them the comfort level they needed because they didn't have the history. They didn't have a longevity around Bon-Ton. And, and, and quite frankly, they were very honest around the fact that there had been some changeover in the board members. And so that made them additionally a little bit more cautious around, uh, around the, uh, around the organization. So, so my, my response to that was, I can't, I can't confirm whether we'll do that until council confirms any financial commitment. However, if you confirmed a financial commitment, we would commit to the administration.
Okay. Uh, councillor LeBlanc?
I have a question. Excuse me, I have a question, but quite frankly, I don't know if there's anyone here who can answer my question. Maybe perhaps someone that was at the Bon-Ton meetings. Um, if I'm not mistaken, there is, if I did my homework correctly, there's, uh, areas in the Canary Islands that have this certification. I'm just curious, okay, I, I think this is great, first off, a comment. I think that this whole certification is wonderful. Um, but for the cost, will, will we really see? I guess there's no way knowing until you try, but that's just my only concern. I'd like to voice, you know, that, there's no doubt about it, it's a great initiative, but it's a costly one. Um, I'm just worried, will we see, you know, uh, a, a positive influx of, of people into our area because of this certification? I guess there's always a risk, no matter what you do. I'm just a little skeptical that, just given the fact that I don't, I'm not a stargazer. I, I have little to no experience in that sector other than for navigation. And I don't know what kind of interest there is out there for people to come to an area like this, even if we have, uh, you, you know, all, all these initiatives on the go. And that's just my only concern, but I also do think it's, you know, it's most definitely a positive thing.
Yeah. So what, what, what Bon-Ton is asking, and, and again, I'm asking you, uh, C A Muse, is for, is it around twenty thousand dollars, uh, ten thousand per year? Is that what they're asking?
Correct.
So, yeah, to, and, and to leverage, uh, you know, I guess seventy-seven from ACOA and already a hundred from the province, uh, so, but anyway, uh, I guess the next slide was councillor Sorette.
I guess I look at the project here and I'm saying to myself, is this a Trout, Trout Point Lodge, uh, project? Is this a Bon-Ton project? I know Bon-Ton's had their name on it. But is this to benefit Trout Point Lodge? Is this to benefit who else? I'm a little leery onto this. Uh, is it good, is it bad? I have, I have, I guess, like, maybe like Lucia, I, I don't, I don't really know. Uh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not bought onto it, even with the presentation that they've made. Twenty thousand dollars they're looking for in two years, uh, pretty hefty sum of money. There's been s- an awful lot of, uh, change in the Bon-Ton society in the execu- not only in, on the board, and I'm, I'm very leery on what was going on there. Uh, by God, I, I, I'm not convinced that this is a, an actual Argyle, you know, it, it will benefit the municipality of Argyle a whole lot. I, it takes some more discussion to make me believe that this is, you know, it seems to be looking at, at the project, a more at Trout Point, a, a large project. Am I saying it's bad, is it good? I guess it's good for them. If it brings tourists in, it could be good if they spend money in our municipality. Can't deny that, but, uh, I'm not really sold on it.
Okay. Councillor Donaldson?
Did I have my light on?
Yes, you did.
Been a long day. Yeah, I was feeling much exactly the same way Guy was feeling the last meeting. I spoke much the same as you have. But I went and seen a member that's not from Trout Point Lodge. And we had a good discussion about it, and I've turned three hundred and sixty degrees on this. Just having the World UNESCO designation is the big part of this. And, uh, weather brings tourism in, just to look at stars. People aren't gonna come, I don't believe, just to look at stars. It may be part of what they do, but if they're here, they're gonna spend money on other things and do other things while they're in the region. Um, so just for the simple reason, a small investment, to get this larger designation through the world, what's it called, the World UNESCO?
Yeah.
Anyhow, after having a serious conversation with this in particular individual, uh, I completely changed my mind. I was very negative before that, so I'm gonna support it, right or wrong, I don't know, but.
Okay. Uh, warden Donflemba?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's good. What we're, I guess we're, we're always looking for is to bring people into the area. Uh, and I guess if it, if it's good for Trout Point, then it must be good for, for us too. Uh, I don't know, I don't know what percentage or how good, but, uh, any, anytime you can, uh, from what I hear, from what I hear, uh, a lot of people love this stuff. I don't have a clue what, what they do or what they see, but, uh, I don't see anything when I look up there. I don't see much. But apparently, a lot of people think it's, 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 really like it. So I think, you know, like I say, if, if it's good for Trout Point and, and not only Trout Point, I don't think, but it must be good for us too, so.
And another?
And another thing I had a concern about, none of this money is going for capital projects. Like, we're not building anything for anybody. That's probably down the road. Uh, we can decide then whether we're gonna help fund capital projects, observation decks or whatever it may be, or telescopes, or I, I have no idea. And I'm Lake Aldrich, I can identify a full moon, but that's about it. And usually I can tell them the day, I can tell them the day of it, or the people you meet.
Yeah. Okay, councillor Sorette?
There's another component to it that says, from the emails from our C A O, that says, you know, every four or five years, there'll be a cost for certification audit of ten thousand dollars. And I realize it also says here that there's no commitment that we're making towards this or they haven't, we have not been approached either, but that's another, you know, something maybe to think of, uh, down the road. Just a comment.
Okay. Uh, councillor LeBlanc?
Again, I'm, I'm on the fence of this a little bit, but when you're looking at the perspective, this is our taxpayers' dollar and is it really gonna be leveraged in a, in a certain way that benefits all our taxpayers or our area? It's twenty thousand dollars over two years. If you put a twenty thousand dollar ad over on the main side of the ferry and said, come to Argyle, would probably bring more people, in my opinion, that's just my uneducated opinion, would probably bring more people to our area than this project. I don't doubt that this project will bring people to our area. And I spoke as well, most likely with the same person you did, Richard, and she, she did shed some light, and I'm really glad.
Why was it?
Okay, no, sorry. Um, anyways, I, I talked with someone who didn't know quite a bit about this project, and it did shed some light on it. And I don't doubt that it's positive, but if we're looking for bang for our buck, is it really the best place to allocate twenty thousand dollars? I don't know. Again, kinda like councillor Sorette has said, I'm not against it. I'm kinda for it, but I'm very much on the fence. And I feel, I, I've read, I've read this through and through, and I still feel uneducated on the whole, um, uh, how should I say this? How, how this will all really unfold with the funding and what really that gets allocated to and how that gets developed and where we go from there. It's just, I just, uh, I'm uncomfortable making a decision on this.
Okay, uh, just a question for C A Muse. We, we had already budgeted for this item, is that correct, or?
Yes, we did. Uh, so included in your, cause I, I, I wasn't sure whether you would support it or not, so I err on the side of include, uh, as I do. So, uh, I did include the ten thousand for this year in your budget. That doesn't commit you to that
Yeah.
number, but it just, it should give you some understanding that this is not a new item on your budget.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing that, that, uh, the other item that I should, I should note was, uh, the year prior to that, we had Bon-Ton present, uh, two, two priorities to, to council. And, uh, one was geotourism and the other was this one. And so we had, we didn't know, and, and I think what had happened was Bon-Ton had asked, um, the town municipality, Annapolis,
Clare.
Clare for twelve thousand five hundred to support both projects. None of that money was spent, none of that money was transferred. So we had that num- that number that was earmarked, that was not spent. Again, that's, that may or may not influence your decision because that was a past, but, but the fact of the matter is, is that we, we did support for twelve five our council, um, prior to, for two projects. Now what they're doing is they're focusing on the one. It's difficult, I, I, I don't think that, that this council or, or any council will be able to establish what the payback will be on this. That's the difficulty, right? Um, so maybe, maybe it would be helpful if I would explain where your money is going, right? And so where your money is going is, first of all, the certification and the, and the, uh, the, the audit for the Dark Sky Initiative is going to happen regardless of your investment. Okay? So the hundred thousand dollars that the province will be doing will certify and, and enable an audit to make sure that this designation becomes the UNESCO-designated Dark Sky Preserve, okay? That will happen regardless of your decision tonight. What your decision tonight will do is add value to that. What it will do is, it will add a marketing and a train the trainer component. So when, when the people from Spain, most of them are from Spain, they'll come down, they'll do this. So what they'll do is they'll sit with the stakeholders that have participated, so Argyle being one of them. So they'll, they'll sit with the Argyle stakeholders. And we will, and we will be engaged in that process because we have already invested an amount of money in this. We have already invested three thousand, um, and which was part of the twelve five that we had put aside years ago. So, 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 so we should benefit from that piece, right? And so, and what it means is they come in and they train you to be able to provide an experience to the tourist that comes. So it's not just about the certification, it's about, okay, we are certified, tell the world in, in whatever way Bon-Ton thinks is best. And then, uh, also that our people will be trained in order to provide a value to them when they arrive. So, you know, like, if you point, you know, to the point around the full moon and not knowing much more. So, so, uh, you know, there'll be a training around that. So that's, that's where our investment comes into place. That is primarily what the ACOA asks us for. It's almost like an additional component to what will actually happen regardless. So I think that's important for you to know because that piece will happen, uh, the certification itself. So the question you, you might wanna ask yourself is whether or not that adds value to the project that will occur regardless, okay? So, so I hope that's clarifies a little bit. Um, uh, whether it changes your mind around the value of the investment, you know, that, that's, I think there's an element of, 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 of uncertainty, but the fact that it's a UNESCO designation, uh, is certainly a big deal. Um, there, that's not a small thing. Um, I think Grand Prix would, uh, I think that, uh, Gerald Budrow and Stan Sorette were instrumental in the Grand Prix designation as, as a world heritage site for Grand Prix. And they'll tell you that that was a tremendous, a tremendous, uh, impact, uh, for that area, if not immediately then over time, because it gives you a promotion worldwide that you get with that certification, that you wouldn't get otherwise.
And that impact probably for us here, Grand Prix being, uh, about les acadiens, uh, you know, that flows into here because people who come to Grand Prix make their way down. Uh, councillor Book, your light's been on for a while.
It's okay, but, um, I'll add sort of what I was gonna say. This is worldwide. We're gonna attract people from all over and you wouldn't believe how many people are, are interested in these kind of things. And it might be a good thing that you have people from other countries, Europe, especially European countries that come. They might like our area, might get something good out of it, industry or something like that, you just never know. So I think this is, uh, it's important that goes on.
Uh, next slide, I guess councillor LeBlanc? Okay, uh, next slide, I guess, Council LeBlanc?
One more time, uh, just very quickly, if we do get this certification, who gets the certification?
The area.
What's the area? Uh, the area includes, uh, multiple municipalities, includes the municipality of Yarmouth, Argyle, Clare. Um, I believe Shelburne as well. A lot of the dark sky area is in the Kechem Kujic, uh, Tobiotic
Tobiotic area.
area, so that's the darkest skies. And we are already designated as a preserve, a dark sky, like, not at the UNESCO level, but there's, there's an identification that it's extremely dark skies in that area. So it, it, it impacts multiple municipalities.
In an inaccessible area? Tobey Addix, almost nearly impossible to get to, uh, other than by canoe?
Right, well, I don't, um, from the perspective of where, um, you know, the observation will be,
Right, right.
I can only say that the Montant president and treasurer, who are actually, uh, Trout Point, uh, uh, owners, s- uh, said that one of the, one of the foundational things that they had arguments around was there, there, there should not be any of those capital investments done to benefit business. So they were very clear around that not being on their property, or that, that, you know what I mean? So, so it was an argument actually that they had, it was one of a fundamental discussion that they had, and, and they were very, very adamant that they did not want it to be benefiting Trout Point directly. Indirectly, of course, everybody wants to benefit, but, but the direct, uh, you know, where these things are located, they were very, very adamant that it wouldn't be part of that.
That's very humble and probably a point that, uh, councils-
I'm glad you mentioned it.
Would like to have heard, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, with the designation, then, uh, you know, anybody in the area can, can capitalize, can, you know, so it's not, you know, it's, you know, like I said earlier, you know, when they had the presentation, the sky's the limit, right? So, yeah. Uh, next slide, I guess, was Council Albright?
I guess I just wanted to kind of agree with what, uh, Council Bork said, you know, this is gonna be worldwide recognition, and I think we're a little bit skeptical, because as a council, we don't have a lot of experience with this ourselves. When it came to this, the kayaking symposium, we, we kayak, we live in the ocean, we know, so we felt very comfortable with that. But it's, I get it, it's a risk, it's taxpayers' money, but this is also, it could be huge for us, we don't know, so it boils down to are we willing to take that risk for ten thousand dollars a year, which is already budgeted for?
Yeah.
Just saying. You know, it, it could be a great, great thing for us. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Uh, Council Donaldson?
Well, including the presentation and talking about it two or three different meetings, I think it's time to see where we stand. I'll make a motion that we, uh, we support this initiative for, for ten thousand dollars for the next two years.
I want to second that.
Motion on the floor, seconded, seconded, uh, more discussion, did you want your light on?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, Council LeBlanc?
I was just gonna make the motion.
Okay. Um, so it's been moved by Council Donaldson, seconded by Council Sorette, any more discussion?
Question.
Question, all those in favor singing aye?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Right?
I guess what I was gonna say is, you know, it's, it's not a whole lot of money, if we can get four hundred thousand, you know, for twenty thousand, it's, it's a pretty good, uh-
Leveraging tool?
Leveraging, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, all right, we'll move to, uh, seven B, and before we move to seven B, that was a good discussion, by the way. Uh, seven B, District Community Grants, uh, number one is the Knights of Columbus. Is that yours?
It is, I have a request for five hundred dollars, they are putting on, it's the first time they're gonna do this, it's a July first Canada Day celebration, so they're requesting five hundred dollars, so I make the motion, we approve their-
Moved?
Their request. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, number two is, uh, Immaculate Conception Cemetery, is that yours?
That's mine.
Kathy Bork, Council Bork?
We were asked, cause they're doing repairs in our cemetery, and our funds are tied up, so we're short in cash, so they're asking, uh, for support for amount of money, so I am, um, making the motion to grant five hundred dollars from a district community grant.
Moved?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, number eight, notice of motion, does anybody have a notice of motion? Having heard none, we will move to number nine, which is question period, anybody have questions from the gallery?
Move adjourned.
Number ten, adjournment, move adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?